...tonight on this Monday, February 5th, 2018. The time is 7:02 PM. And we will now call to order this regular meeting of the Talapo City Council. Clerk, would you give us a roll call, please?
Counselor Long. Counselor Combs.
Here.
Counselor Hires.
Here.
Counselor Bliss.
Here.
We do have a quorum, but ladies and gentlemen, we are going to be missing Counselor Long this evening, but we can still continue with business tonight. And to get that started, we will ask Chaplain Paul Tadner from Go'U Village Chapel to come and lead us in our invitational this evening. Yes, sir.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this meeting tonight. Father, we ask for your direction and guidance to be given to those that are in leadership here. Father, we want to thank you for our leadership in Talapo. Father, we're grateful. We're grateful for them. And Father, we pray that you will guide and direct them and give them your wisdom. And Lord, we do want to commit this meeting to you this evening. May you be glorified. May your will be accomplished in all these things. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'll join me in the fireplace. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in thy judicial and legal protection and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Tadner. Item number two is our public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time, and the cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Rep逞 will be given to Talapo citizens. In compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Anyone who would like to make any public comments at this time? Yes, ma'am, if you'll come to the microphone and tell us your name and make a comment or two, glad to have you.
Speaker. I left loud. Yeah, my name is Buffy Guthrie. I came once before. I don't know if you remember. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Combs, a friend of mine. He spoke with Ms. Long. I'd like to thank the fire chief, the city code enforcer. I live at 201 South Lena, and right down the road from me is a meth house that caught on fire last December. It's been an atrocity. It's just been sitting there. It's nasty. The meth addicts still traffic in and out of there. So through Mr. Combs, the fire chief, the code enforcer, we finally got it condemned. I hope, hopefully, we can get it abated and completely removed. It's hazardous. It's gross. It's disgusting. But the meth addicts still traffic through there. So my thing, I guess I want to say is, I like the city of Talapo. I like living here, but it's got a really bad growing meth problem. I don't know what you need to do to look at it. I know my hairdresser, I know another business owner, that during the broad daylights, they don't want to leave their doors open. You have to knock on their door so they can come let you in and then lock you in because they have meth addicts that come in and just sit down and look at them and go, "Do you have money I can borrow?" And if you're a female, I'm sorry, but that's pretty scary. And if you're a male, that's pretty scary because they're high and they're crazy. And what I know for working for the Department of Corrections for 22 years, this meth addicts only get bolder. They start with crimes of convenience, petty theft, then it advances to burglary. That house is down the road. This is their criminal file, their arrest, or the police reports for less than a year, and it's this thick for one house. The people that are in this report, every officer that I've called knows them by name. I can say the blonde, and they go, "Oh, yeah, that's so-and-so." These people need a zero tolerance. They don't need a warning when they get stopped. It just, it needs to be an automatic. After they put up the condemn signs, the lady was served the papers. Do not be there. She was there with four of the other meth addicts. They were let go with a warning. I just, I don't, as the person that lives down the road from them, I don't think that that's fair. They knew, they were given, they were told, the house has been burnt since December. They were trespassing, and they knew they were. But for the city of Talapo, which I like to live in, I hope that we can get it controlled. I don't know if it's extra budgeting for the police, something, but something needs to happen, or you're going to lose the city, and I hate to say that. I guess I'm over the line for close to, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. We really appreciate it. Is there anyone else that'd like to make any comments at this time? Seeing no one else, we will now move to item number three, which is the consent agenda. Counselors, this is the usual group of items that can be approved by unanimous consent. Otherwise, you can pull them out and hear them individually, or any one of them individually if you would like. It's like a pretty short consent agenda this evening. And we would entertain a motion to a through. Motion in a second from Counselors Hires and Combs. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Bliss.
Yes.
Counselor Combs.
Yes.
Counselor Hires.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is our announcements, presentations, and reports. We do have Chief King with us this evening. He was wanting to make a few remarks, and we turn the floor over to him now.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. To touch on some of Ms. Guthrie's concerns, our officers have been notified of the condemnation, but the city's also given those folks 10 days to make certain repairs. And so what they've been told is if they're on the property and not working, they will be arrested for trespassing. The night of question, they were actually, they had a board, they had a hammer and nails, and they were trying to secure the back door, which is why they were arrested that evening for trespassing. They have been told. Officers have very detailed instructions on how to handle calls. In the last three years, or a little over three years, we've made 39 arrests of people from that residence. We've gone to three fires, nine fights, 10 domestics, and seven burglaries at that residence alone. And that's just since we went to spillment. We are compiling the rest of the data. It just takes a little longer. So wanted to touch on 1219 East Fuller Collection. We do have a plan, but we also can't violate people's rights. So we're handling that as efficiently and effectively as we can. And it is frustrating. And Ms. Guthrie, I want you to know, in 2000, when I started as a patrolman, we were going to that house at least twice a week then. It's been a 20-plus-year residence that we deal with quite a few people. So the fatality accident from a week ago should be completed midweek this week. We received the final report from the Oklahoma Highway Patrol. They collected some data for us at the scene, and so Lieutenant Steve Arnell should have that report done this week and turned into the DA's office. We are anticipating first-degree murder charges being requested in regard to that accident. Last week, we assisted the ATF, or detectives did, on the explosion that happened in the Tin Killer area. And we also started online training last month for all our supervisors and prospective supervisors, leadership training. It's a year-long program through the Cleveland website. And so so far, we've had four weeks of that, and the guys are really liking it. Other than that, we are plugging along, trying not to wreck cars. So entertain any questions, comments, or concerns at this time from the council or the audience.
Commend you on the leadership training. What's that means to be more of?
We had 11 people attending, so that. And then we have two attending an onsite training at the vote pick, but I think there are other departments within the city participating in that one also. Assistant Chief and Lieutenant Arnell are attending the one at the vote pick. And then we have all the, all the rest of our supervisors, plus four, I believe, people that have shown interest and produced the work and show the work ethic that we're looking for in supervisors that are attending the leadership, online leadership training. So anything else? Anyone? Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Appreciate it. Counselor, you have the reports from other departments in your packet, and we do have Mr. Drew Haley. He's here with us this evening if he wants to say anything regarding the Main Street Association. What do you have?
Dropped off a report, yep. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Some questions of Mr. Haley. Seeing none, we'll move along. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
And I did see, is anyone here from the chamber to provide a report this evening?
Not yet. We're getting close.
Yeah, exactly. They're still in the middle of finding an executive. Then we will now move to our regular session, and the first item up, and we're working on removing the consent agenda, will be item five, discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number 1252, 2018 rezoning of property located on the southwest corner of the intersection of West Ford Street and Stick Ross Island Road from two family dwelling District R2 to General Commercial District C2. Mr. Johnson couldn't be here this evening, and so what I'm going to do is just provide a very short opportunity for the applicant or the property owner to make some very brief comments, and then if anyone would want to make any after that, again, maybe very brief, but we've had a few meetings at the planning and zoning level and one, two weeks ago here in these chambers with this group, so we'll again try to compress our remarks tonight. Is there the owner, the applicant, excuse me, Mr. Stratton?
My name is Braden Stratton. I'm the owner, current owner of the property. The first thing, I'll be quick, the first thing that was brought to my attention by someone that was here two weeks ago, and it was not my intent, but I did not intend to sound like a smart aleck in explaining the zoning law and what happened over those two months. That was not my intent. I was frustrated that we were at that place after two meetings of the whole situation. You know, for me, this is a life decision, you know, and I want people to take it serious by showing up. And so I was very frustrated, and so I do want to publicly apologize if I sounded like a smart aleck in any way. Someone told me that I did, and that was not my intent, so I did want to publicly apologize if I did to any of you guys. And then, secondly, real quick, the one thing that's been on my mind the last two weeks, the more and more I think about it and just ask you to consider one more time, is the, really the sense that over the last 40 years that we know of, this property has acted as a commercial type of property. The parking lot, the drive, the traffic, we've had, we've had daycares, not in-home daycares, but actual businesses, daycares that have been in there. That's easy to prove and look up. There's been multiple churches and, not house churches, actual churches with offices, even myself had a school out of there. And so, you know, I guess that's the one thing that I would, I would ask you just to make sure that, I guess you've considered is, you know, that after 40 years, you know, almost feel like that there's a grandfather in here. This has flown, it's flown under the radar, I guess, you know? And so I don't know what that means moving forward. I hope it means that we can get a vote to rezone it. But I've just been thinking about this, this particular thing a lot the last few weeks, about the years of what that property has been. And so that's really all that I have to say is apologize if I was being smart the other week, and then also just to bring that to your attention one more time, you know, the use of the property over at least 40 years that we know of. And so unless you have a question for me about something in particular, that's all I have.
Counselors? Thank you, Mr. Stratton. Appreciate it very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a brief comment? Mr. Uzo?
Yes. Mr. Uzo, I object to the rezoning request. There are plenty of empty properties in town. I do. Down La Scoggi, there's empty properties. There's empty property right across from the church and the courthouse. There are plenty of properties for office space. We live in a residential community, and what I request this council to do is to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uzo. Counselor, one more quick comment if anybody would like to make one at this time. Yes, sir.
My name is Anthony Crasit, and I voiced my concerns the last few times. Everyone's probably pretty familiar with it. But, you know, that thing, it operated as a church, and as a church body, that helped out the community. The church's point is to help out the communities. And like I said, as a church, I'm sure it did that. People probably felt safer. I know I did. I didn't mind a church being down there because of the simple fact that, like I said, if I needed to go there, I could. Fortunately, now no one invited me to go there, but I still felt better with the church and the community. A church is supposed to bring light to a community. The business in a community setting is just not going to work. Like I said, we're worried about thieves bringing and coming into our community. Like I said, we, like we spoke about the crack houses, had fences. People were running straight in, and it's going to make our community look bad. And like I said, that's just my concerns about it. Like I said, you know, and they're going to run a business or do whatever it is they got to do there. They won't go commercial if you kind of put it that way. The only reason that place has to be commercial is because the city council's buggered it that way. Any other time, I wouldn't do it.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselors, you've heard the remarks in both meetings. You've had a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. You've had a few weeks to give this item some thought, and it is entirely in your court now, what you would want to do. We either make a motion, you can talk amongst yourselves and ask questions, but Mr. Johnson's not here at court, so.
Legal question. A bit to see the ordinance, so can we pass an ordinance without seeing it in its legal form?
You can pass that, and then obviously I can draft it. It's how do you directly draft it? But you're right. I've never seen it draft either.
Yeah, I just, I have some hesitation with it.
Yeah, if you choose to take a vote today, I can sit here and hold this way, but that is typically some plant does.
Inplant is in on vacation. Understandable. Nice looking.
Entirely up to you, gentlemen.
Well, I've, I've gone back and forth on this issue several times in the last two weeks, playing both sides, everything. But, you know, even yesterday, I, you know, toyed with this, this situation. With that in mind, I'm going to make the motion to, to deny the rezoning because I think we need to protect the integrity of the residents in the area.
So we have a motion to not adopt ordinance 1252-2018. Is there a second?
I have a question.
If, I'll start it so he can tell. Yeah, as you said, we need to cut your count, so we have a second, but Counselor.
My question, because I was going to say, wouldn't it be better just to take no action on the item?
And we can certainly do that.
Just going to vote. If the, if the action is to go against the item, then it would be better to take the motion.
We have a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning.
Are there any other questions or comments, Counselors?
Can I ask a question? Is that pro-call or I don't know what the situation is?
One last time, yes, sir?
Yes.
Just a question, not a, not a commentary.
Right, 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 right. You know, I guess my question leans back to, you know, what, what do we do with, with that property if it's not resumed? What, what is done with the property that is functioning not as a residence and hasn't for 40 years? So I just, that's a question that I would, you know, I would want that answered as the owner. Like, what do I do moving forward?
We won't be able to answer that question for you. All we can do is tell you that it will remain if this motion is approved and is currently zoning.
Well, my, my thought process on that particular question was, there's been several churches and daycares in that particular building. Is that not a possibility that that would happen again?
Well, I mean, it's been for sale for a while, and everybody that's looked at it's been wanting some kind of little office business. And, and I guess because if you drive down Fourth Street, that's not setting in the middle of the neighborhood. I know Stick Ross has homes. Fourth Street doesn't have any homes, and that address is 1103 West Fourth Street. It's not setting in the middle of a housing project at all, if you drive by and look at it. And so, you know, that's just, that was my question, because I, you know, as a property owner, if this doesn't work for your house, really, I'm handicapped with a piece of property.
It's currently R2 designation, and so it can still operate as a church. It can still, you know, it could operate as a two-family dwelling, so it could, you know? And I think you're sometime, I think in what you said two weeks ago, and the way you're viewing it is you view because somebody else owns the house, say it's a duplex, it's a camp lot, apartments, those, that you, you see those as a business, but in reality, they're residential.
Right. No, I understand.
So my, in my thought process, you are setting in the middle of a community. You're setting right off of Stick Ross. You're setting on Fourth Street. You're right next to a lot of apartments and duplexes. You're right down from Go'U Village, which I know is, again, a business, but it's a residential business. It's where, you know, people are living there.
Yeah. And the R2 facility has a commercial stop parking lot circled through, and it has for years. It's not a traditional, it's not a yard. I mean, all the detour traffic is detoured through there now. I hope you got that, you know? It's not, nobody's ever really treated that as a residence in years, not even the city. And so I personally feel like to neglect, to take no action or to go another direction, you know? I don't know. I don't, I don't see that. I feel like something should, you know, I just, I mean, obviously, you know what I think should be, that's why I'm here, but.
Right. That's what I'm trying to keep is contained to questions.
I know, and that's what I was, I mean, I was responding to what he said, so I'm not trying to bring up other stuff, but those are the legit questions to me as an owner.
And they venture, I guess, for you, but I'd hate to for it to try to get into any kind of official opinion on other than what is contained in the R2 zone.
Right.
Thank you, Stratton. Anyone else? Seeing no other desired comments, court, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Bliss?
No.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Mayor?
I, I'm.
Would you? Okay, good, okay.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
And because of the unique nature of that, let me make my notes as well. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go on to item number six, which is discussion and a possible action to adopt ordinance number 1254, 1254-2018, amending an ordinance relating to the prohibition against smoking in indoor places and workplaces, providing definitions, establishing signage requirements, and providing enforcement penalties. Mr. Johnson, again, couldn't be here with us this evening, and so we're going to rely on Ms. Carol Choak to tell us about the amendments that are being made, and this is the second time in 90 days that my memory is failing me, but did this come for reading?
I believe so. It was a couple years ago.
Is this a?
This is an ordinance that passed March 2014.
No, 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 these amendments, though.
It didn't come last year.
That, that's my question. This is our first hearing, so. So, Counselors, we're going to get the explanation this evening and won't be able to take action despite what the agenda I read, but I'm sure you'll have to come back in a couple of weeks to have some. Go ahead, Ms. Chen, I'm sorry.
My name is Carol Choak. I'm with the T-SAD Helping Living Program. As the mayor said, this is ordinance number 1216-2014. It's related to the prohibition of smoking in indoor public places and workplaces, and prohibiting the use of electronic smoking devices in senior facilities. The city of Talapo, as I said, passed this March 24, and it was reviewed. Clint and I reviewed it extensively, and based on recent findings and new evidence, we have made some changes to the, to the ordinance that we would like to present to the, to the council. I believe that Clint has shared those changes with the council, and it's in your packet. And is it, you got, you have that? And what I'm just going to briefly say is the changes in the model ordinance is definitions of indoor area, which significantly, I said, a shorter definition than, than what the other one was. We're defining outdoor area, making it very plain that it's any area that's not indoors, and it's includes outdoor recreation areas. Municipal properties was not defined in the other ordinance that it is in this one. Do you want me to read these, or do you all have them?
I believe it's in front of them. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that is a new definition. And then electronic smoking devices, when this was passed, we, that was relatively new to us. So with the research that's been done on these devices, they're now called tobacco products, and that definition is included, the newer definition. Tobacco products is shortened because we don't go through all this news and those, that terminology. And then we've taken the exemptions out because the exemptions are state law, and so they don't have to be included in local law. And as far as posting goes, the required signs, there was no designee for putting the signs out, so we put in city administrator or his/her designee shall be responsible for posting. And then violations of penalty enforcement, the enforcement of this ordinance shall be the responsibility of the city of Talapo. In addition, any peace officer or code enforcement officer may enforce. And then the last is, we have in there that possession of lighted tobacco in any form is a public nuisance, and so therefore we will put that, that the products should be But there are no changes essentially to the, to the ordinance.
Just a few definitions, is there, but?
The definitions, the signage.
And signage.
And the ordinance.
Counselor, do you have any questions of Ms. Choak? We were here, when did you say? What year was that?
2014.
2014. Was this the one that was in the bill?
Yes.
Got you.
Yes, this was the one.
I remember that. Well, it appears that the Counselors don't have any questions, and we will await another council meeting in order to see what they want to do in that particular time. Is there anyone who'd like to make any comments at this time?
So a question on the signage, is this?
Go ahead, come on up to the microphone.
The signage, is that something that's required for private businesses or government? If you could explain what that means for the rest of us, that would be very helpful as a business owner. It would affect me.
If you do have a tobacco-free, free business, then we can provide you with stickers for your door, and we also have signage that can be provided.
But it's not required, it's a can?
No, it's not.
Not a must.
Right.
So it's not required for private businesses?
No.
Okay. That was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
And it says in there, if you smoke, and you've got an office, and nobody comes to it, go for your smoke while you want your office. I guess as long as you're not breaking near this. There are some exemptions in this.
Yeah. And that's the same law.
Any other questions, Ms. Choak? Thank you for the presentation, and we will see you most likely on the 20th. I have this weird feeling that we'll wait two weeks, run into President's Day, and then decide to do it the day after on Tuesday. So we'll see you all very likely on that day, because it's not getting sent.
All right.
Thank you. Number seven is discussion and possible action to purchase a Hustler SuperZ mower. Commissioner Ryals?
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, everyone. My voice is a little rough, I'm still trying to recover from quitting smoking. So it's hard to do. Anyway, I guess I'd like to request to make purchase of a... Anyway, yes, I'd like to request to make purchase of a Hustler Super Z mower, and it's 66-inch cut. It will be purchased from Hustler Turf Equipment of Oklahoma, but it will be handled through Express Equipment. It is on a state contract. We do have the money in the budget. There was money budgeted for the mower. I had waited till now because we can get the best prices on mowers at this time. If we're allowed to purchase it, it will be stored to where, in a dry, clean area until our third mower bites the dust, and then we'll get it out and start using it.
Did you, and big on this, did you, what was the price?
The price is $10,596.06. And again, that is, it's on state contract, statewide contract 190.
Commissioner appreciate the presentation. Counselors, do you have any questions of the commission? We entertain a motion. A motion and a second from Counselor Hires and Counselor Combs presented with the authority approval.
Yes, of the $10,596.06. I guess I'll have to stake that off the contract. That's in 190.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Commissioner, know you're here with us for this one as well. Number eight is discussion and possible action to allow the street department to purchase a 2019 freightliner truck equipped with a 2018 oil distributor through a lease purchase agreement. Is that Ettnair? Ettnair?
Ettnair, yes.
That's actually where.
Oil distributor and the freightliner. And I do have some copies of some interest rates that I'm going to pass out to you before I start talking. I was not able to get these prior to, or get packages one out. I started at the top, the lowest interest rates. And the bottom has the highest interest rates. And you will notice there's a bank or two in town that are not listed on there, and that's because they either, I was told that their interest rates were higher, or they just didn't get back with me. Wealth State Bank would be, you know, up near me. I'm, I'm going to back up a little here. Okay, what we're requesting is to purchase.
A truck and an oil distributor.
Yes, sir. Okay. The purchase is 2019 freightliner truck equipped with a 2018 Ettnair oil distributor through a lease purchase agreement. It, the, the bid got just through Premier Trucks in Tulsa. The truck itself, the purchase price on it is $73,673.60. And the oil distributor is $99,081.89, and that is mounted. The whole process, if approved, will be handled through Premier Truck Company in Tulsa. State contracts, the, okay, the truck is on statewide contract 0315. The oil distributor is, I'm not sure, it's second allocated. I apologize for not having this all together, but it is, it is on statewide contract. Okay, it's going to be statewide contract 195. And as we get to the interest rates to consider, if approved, the Wealth State Bank has the lowest interest rate. 48 months, they quoted me a 3.46% interest rate with a $3,863.88 payment a month. On 60 months, they go with 3.52% interest with a $3,148.37 per month payment. The SMB Bank in Shattuck, Oklahoma, they do a lot of the financial lending. They quoted for 48 months, 3.5%, $3,868.56 a month. On 60 months, the 3.56% interest rate with a monthly payment of $3,152.61. Arvest Equipment Finance out of Tulsa, they had a 48-month, 3.6% monthly payment, $3,870.19. 60-month lease purchase would be 3.78%, which would be a $3,164.76 payment per month. Bank First here in town on 48 months is going to be 4.09% at, and that would make the payment $3,912.09 per month. So I might have gotten my car ahead of the horse. Probably should have waited to see if it was anything wanted to be done. But these are the, the two pieces of equipment, which will be bought as one unit, and here are the interest rates you can consider.
That $48,000 that we have in the budget was put in there with the intent to lease purchase. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And that will be enough to make monthly payments for a little bit over 12 months.
Right now, we've only got five remaining in the fiscal year, so we'd have about 20-ish or so thousand left after you made, if you went with the Wealth State Bank and the little trade. Counselors, any of any questions for the commission? Is this replacing a truck? Is it, where are we?
Yes, the, the one we have, it's, I don't know, I don't know how old it is, counselor, it's, it's probably the oldest truck we have on the place. I should have checked how old it was. I know it's been there over 20 years. It has a small tank. When, when we go to the Port of Catoosa to buy the road oil, we have to push the truck up on a trailer and chain it down, and haul the truck up there, and then fill the tank and haul it back. Then when we get back, we work on the back end of it, which heats up and distributes the oil. We work on it more than we use it. It's, it's junk.
You can't, the, the truck that it's replacing, like, you can't drive it to Catoosa? You have to haul it?
I don't trust it to go there. We can barely get it to run two blocks to, when we're laying an answer. No, sir, we, we don't, we don't drive it to Catoosa. It's, it's pretty, pretty rough, yeah.
Counselor, we entertain a motion.
Make motion. We accept the bids from what State Bank, 48 months, 3.5% interest purchases, truck and oil distributor.
We have a motion from Counselor Combs. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Hires with the second. Any final questions, comments? Counsel, Commissioner, Court, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, Commissioner, thank you so much.
I'll, I'll get it underway.
Next up is item number nine, which is discussion and possible action to and/or enter into side lodging agreement between the City of Telkow and Branch Towers LLC. James, Chief James.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselor. This is a side agreement to move our communications antenna to a different tower than what we currently use or what we have been using. We've been using the city's tower for, gosh, since I can remember it, but recent events, they went to the narrowbanding process, and it's really hampered our communications within the department virtually to, to nothing. It just, you know, we can't communicate in our own city, much less out in the rural areas. We did a lot of investigating on what we needed to do. We had people come over and look at it, try to repair it. It's at a about 100 feet in the area of antenna. It also serves with the police department. And what we found is that both the antennas were virtually walking on each other, not just when we were talking, but just as it sat there. It had a lot of interference. We looked at replacing the antenna there and moving it. That was a bad option because of the cost, and we still wouldn't have much more communication. We were made aware of another tower that's out there by the city dump that's owned by Branch. Carl at Musco Communications has, does their work for them. He does a lot of work for us. He allowed us to put an antenna for the last two months up there to use to see if it would work. It went from terrible to good. And last night, we were on a structured fire at 1:00 a.m., and it had been, if you know where that's at, way past welling, and we were able to communicate back to our fire station. Before we had this antenna, we couldn't communicate from the bowling alley to the fire department. So, and it's nobody's fault but the FCC who said we're going to narrowband all these, these radios for the folks. I think this is going to be a $300 a month cost where before it wasn't. I do have enough money in the budget to take care of that. And professional services between now and June, and from that point in time, we plan to budget for that cost. We are now, our receiver is at 250 feet as opposed to 100 feet, and our communications is at 300 feet. So we, we've got a lot better process. This is imperative. I know that we are, as a city and county, we are all looking at maybe doing the 800 megahertz sometime in the future. That is a tremendous amount of money, and everybody's going to have to switch to it, so it's going to be difficult to get there, not impossible, but I think it's years down the road. Until then, we've got to have communications, so that's why, this is before even that.
Counselors, you've heard the explanation from Chief James. Like it's imperative, to use his word?
Imperative.
We would entertain a motion. Or a question. Go ahead, Senator.
I can do the motion.
As your hope.
I make a motion to.
Approved, you agree. Approved, there is a second? A second. Second, Counselor Bliss now.
Okay, I have two questions. One, I know is germane, the second, I might get slapped down, let's say, that it's not on the agenda. But, so when we do this, will there, who else will be left on the tower that we own?
All I know of is that the police department and emergency management. I think this will free up the interference that they have, is what I've been told. I'm hoping so. If it doesn't, I, I don't know, I'm not, at this particular tower we're on, Cherokee County Sheriff's, the one we're moving to, has Cherokee County Sheriff's Department on it, TCH, and I think one of the, either the gas authority or.
It's not that it affects you, but do you know, do they have room that if, when we move the fire over and it doesn't free up the police, it's still not working for the police, is there room to move the police over?
I would assume that there would be, but I, again, that's kind of out of my, my realm there. I don't know if that's something that they would want to talk to.
The way you're.
Yeah.
Okay, and so my, my other question is, is this, because we're on this tower, that we're not, that's not doing well? Somebody told me this one, or this week, when that, that explosion that happened at Keys, that it, there's like an emergency system, and everybody on that emergency system except for Taalqaw is, feeds into it. So basically, when they were, they were seeing, oh, this, this happened at Keys, but it's not, Taalqaw's not feeding into it. Is the reason we don't feed into that have anything to do with this tower?
No. The fire department does feed into that, and, but I think we're the only one, and the reason the fire department can is because we're part of the county sales tax that pays for that. I don't think the other departments are, have, are privy to it because of that. The reason we get it is because we're part of the county sales tax. So we weren't notified, and it does come to us, but it, it does miss out on other departments.
There's a lot of history behind that that we, maybe we don't have time for tonight, but you know, it's a long time. What you're, you're hearing, can I go back?
Kind of years, 30 years, let's be fair. Starting of 911.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And I believe that the original tower can still serve as a backup in case something goes wrong in business.
If this, this tower falls down, we still have a repeater there. We, we have a license, we were bringing for another license there. So we will have both of them, and it will be a backup for our communications tower. Mr. Carr and attorney Grant went through the contract. There was a lot of extra fodder in there that didn't need to be there. They sorted through and made it suitable for the city to use and, and worked the room that helped me out a lot.
Any other questions? I have a motion to approve from Counselor Hires and a second by Counselor Bliss. Court gives her roll call, please.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 10 is discussion and possible action to hire an operator in the street department to the study. And Chief is not here, so Commissioner.
I'll be in the study tonight. A little while, I'll just, hello, I'm back. Okay, I recommend that we hire a young man named Jeremiah Gatewood as a laborer operator for the street department. And I believe Jessica told me it's going to be at a team 112, step one. You may have to check on that, but it'll be as a laborer operator.
What type?
Excuse me?
What type of operator?
Laborer, laborer.
Step one in that classification.
Laborer slash operator.
Okay.
Yes, that's what all, just about all of my guys are.
Most prerequisites.
A motion and a second from Counselor Bliss, Counselor Hires, and Court gives her roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up, we have discussion and update on snowplains. Essentially, the ice rink is what, that's been given, the ice rink downtown. Ms. Moyer?
Yes.
Tulsa brought this place this year.
Okay. First off, I want to say thank you to all the departments in the city. We had a lot of help to make this session run as well as it did, and I really appreciate everybody's cooperation. In my packet, I have just a quick little overview of what previous seasons as well as our current season, and this goes a little more in detail where we have the expenditures in there as well. And it just kind of shows you where we've done well and where we could use a little more help. I started this from after we had taken the rink over by the city from Main Street, so this doesn't include. this doesn't include the first year that I was here. But I started 2002. And if you go through...
Ms. Moyer, very quickly, we, I don't think, you've never operated the rink, have you? That first year, you were a little bit more involved than most, but it was...
Yeah, we were, we did the collect money in Charpen Skates first year.
That's right, okay, okay. I apologize, I just want to make sure, they didn't operate, that was typically...
Well, we didn't...
But you were heavily involved in some of that.
Scraping ice, yep.
And if you have questions as to where I pulled these numbers, I have that packet as well. I pulled from our previous budgets to find out what we had actually spent on our previous What I highlighted was what we actually brought in for our skate fees versus what we contracted out versus our equipment rental, to get me started on where we are with everything. From there, there's some detailed reports about, you know, what we spent to purchase the rink, the Damboni, the skate shack, lights. And I just kind of wanted to show, you know, that us taking it over this year, we did really well. And we hope that we'll do better next year. Any questions?
I have a question. How many days or, we don't really do it that way, how many sessions were shut down because of the weather this year? I mean, we had an unseasonably hot...
I honestly did not bring that with me, how many days we delayed opening or were unable to open. I know we had quite a few. Oklahoma, not much I can do about it, unfortunately. We are looking at possibly being able to do some improvements to it, to hopefully prevent that, but that's, it works.
So, I would wonder what that, how many sessions we either delayed or weren't allowed to open, and then even looking at past years, if there was a way to figure out that, get that data from, you know, last season, if we were supposed to be open for 90 days, but we were only, because of the weather, able to be open for 70, versus last season, we were only able to be open for 65 or 85, you know?
And the answer to that is yes, there should be spreadsheets unless they were deleted or something, that should show which days had, you know, money currently.
Because the, this is great, I mean, you've done a good job putting all this together, and I really appreciate that. But I think for, in some instance, it's, there's an apple to an orange. I mean, I think this year, you know, we were closed for a long time, but last year, we also extended the season for three weeks, where we didn't this year, so, yeah.
We also changed our prices this year.
Yeah?
So, we made that a little bit more reasonable for our family members and for members and community members that have their own skates. So, it made it a little bit more reasonable for people to come in more often.
Was attendance better?
This is my first year, so I apologize, I don't have that answer. I just, I know this year, we had a lot of people that came back on a very regular basis. I think I had a couple of children that were there at least weekly, if not two or three times during the week.
And we could go back through those same spreadsheets and do some rough math to try to figure that out. It gets a little difficult because there, in the previous pricing structures, there were things like if you showed up in groups without, I can't remember the breakdown, but like 10 or more, you'd pay nine bucks, 15 or more, you'd pay eight bucks, you know, per skater. And so, that throws the number off just a hair, but you can make some pretty good guesses, and we could probably get that information for you fairly easily.
Where I was looking at it was skating rentals, the, you know...
The actual rented of the skates?
Right. And to me, this was the, this was, I'm not going to say first year, because I don't remember that, but this was a year that we actually made higher than the projection, you know? And then I didn't know that they were allowed to bring in their own skates at that point.
We, our...
But they're probably still charged a ticket price.
Correct. They still have pay emissions. They didn't have to pay for this skate rental. So, what we did was, last year, adults and, I think it, don't quote me on this, I think five and up or whatever it was, $10 across the board, it didn't matter what age. This year, we tried to make that a little more reasonable and we went ahead and we made it so that our four and unders only had to pay for a skate rental. So, that was a $2 skate rental. No admission, because we understand little kids, they might make it five minutes, they might make it two hours. From ages five to 10, the admission fee was $4 and our skate rental was $2. And then our adults were back to that 10, so it's $8 for admissions and two for skate rental. So, more people in this community had skates than I honestly would have figured, which is awesome. Means that we've been doing a good job with having this open for the community to do that.
So, we may have had more people there than the figures would show when, if you were to relate them and compare them back to the previous year's figures, even more people.
Correct.
I want the donations, we gave so many tickets, it must be hard to remember.
Correct, and we didn't, we didn't do donations this year.
Any other questions? Can you share some of those numbers publicly?
Share numbers?
Whatever you have there, you said it was good, was...
Council projected that we'd make about 32 in skate fees, and we made $32,338. Now, that does include our concession, which we added this year, but it still goes into that form. We saved money this year, we went with a different vendor for our chiller rental, so we only paid 23,500. In previous years, it's been around 32 to 34. So, by going through a different company, we still have the same service, but we just were able to save us some money that way. And then, we did take out the contract with our skate house, and the city ran it there employees only this year, so we saved some money there as well. With the savings, we did really well.
And then, Counselor, back to your question too, is if, if we end up lumping concessions into what we're calling skate fees, at least on this sheet, then that would reduce the number of attendees, but still, I mean, we're, you have some good, I think, comparison estimation.
Thank you for doing this. The council asked a couple of years ago that some kind of business plan was about forth because of the losses it was sustaining every year, and just for whatever reason it ever happened, so I'm glad to see somebody with renewed vigor here.
I want to continue to be a service for the community, but I don't want us to have to take such a huge hit on it. I think it's a great opportunity for our community to have this rink.
So, down here, got it turned into this, and so many of both are this close to having the both in the, in black. Through Mr. Carr and Ms. Moyer, both have almost completed that, that goal and dream with a few changes, so.
I think something that we should look forward to in the future, next year and years after, is also looking for sponsorship opportunities. I know when it first opened, we had sponsorship opportunities, and it seemed like the city went gangbusters that first year and got them, but they did a five-year sponsorship. So, then, they paid all the first year, and then they didn't, they didn't continue to collect sponsors year two, three, four, and five, and now we're at year, wherever we're at, we're sponsoring.
And unfortunately, by the time I got to it, it was a little late to run out about, for at least a few of our entities, if that would be a possibility.
Brief history of the project, basically, down to the first year, we had no idea that anybody here would even want to go skate. We had no, literally no idea if it would be a success, a failure, of any kind whatsoever. So, the, I guess, provision of those sponsorships, Counselor, were, was just as a way of trying to get into this experiment to see if it would even fly. And the next year, once we figured out, we ended up, I think, increasing the size of the rink based upon, you know, the level of enthusiasm that was shown on that, from that first year, and we had a lot of players involved. And yeah, they paid, I think, half of a sizable sponsorship, you know, upfront each, and then the second year, they paid the second half of it. But it was a five-year plan, and so that's why through those next five years, we didn't solicit hardly anymore. I think previous staff had maybe gotten some smaller ones here and there. But now that we've got Ms. Moyer in, probably, plenty of time, we'll take a look at that for the upcoming year, we can certainly make some background, see if we can make that work. Any other questions? Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the call. Ms. Hillen, would you want to come up to the mic and ask your question?
Is it necessary?
Will that just like for one question?
Okay. If you're looking to improve upon the snowplike ice rink, do you have any insights on social media or any reports on how well advertising and marketing did?
We had our Facebook page this year, and actually, that Facebook page was what allowed me to see what some of the problems were coming in for us to fix. So, this year, we went ahead and we put mats down all the way into the restroom, so you could go into an indoor restroom and come back with your skate gloves, not have to take them off. We also found out that there were, I mean, that it was dark and certain areas were really dark at night, so we added complete new lighting, we put some disco lighting that hits the ice and makes it fun in the evenings. We tried to pertain to different requests for like different types of music, try to keep some holiday music, but not blasting you with Christmas 24/7. So, we tried to address a lot of issues that we found online.
But getting the word out to people to get them to come to the skate rink to give you money.
That, this year, myself and my coworker came into this project a little late. We do have a plan to hopefully be able to get our word out a little bit more and also to get into the schools a little bit more than what we were able to this year. So, we are hoping that we can go out to schools by the end of this school year, so they can put us in for their field trips for next year.
And speaking for two merchants downtown, there's a lot of us who are close to that, would love to work with you and try to make it a bigger success next year.
Awesome. I'm all for it.
Talk to us.
Okay, I will, thank you.
One last stat, I think it was 15 days we had that ended up having interference of some kind from the weather, and it was, it was heat. The cover does very good, the pavilion is very good in terms of rain, and helps in terms of sunlight, but when it's 72 degrees, it's hard to keep ice frozen.
And I was out there skating that night, but it was pouring down rain and we didn't get wet. It was really awesome.
Any final comments, Counselors?
Yes.
Ms. Moyer, I think you're up for the next item, that was an actionable item, so we will go to item 12, discussion of possible action on reallocation from Winter Wonderland Recreation Maintenance and Supplies. Thank you.
All right, so, with a lot of the changes that we did in Winter Wonderland this year, we were able to save some money, and I would really appreciate it if we could reallocate what was left in the Winter Wonderland fund over to the Recreation Maintenance account. Finance and I got together, we put together our numbers, our accounts, so that everybody knows where we're pulling from. If you want to know what we started with in a specific account, I can get you that information as well.
And I need to ask the question really quickly, how in the world are we going to be able to prime the pump for this upcoming year if you zero it out?
Thank you.
Well, with my maintenance account, I can do quite a bit with it, I have a little bit more flexibility with it, and we still have money where we can market for next year.
You won't after July 1. I mean, we'll, I mean, this will go back into a big pile, or you will spend it all on other things. So, and that's, that's why I insisted on the creation of that fund in that first year, was to try to keep some of those startup costs separate on this, at the time, somewhat kind of individual project. I don't even mind if we wanted to shuttering that entire Winter Wonderland fund and then just counting for it in your supply budget for the upcoming year.
I'd really prefer not to.
Well, then, why are we zeroing out the Winter Wonderland fund?
Because I can use that money in other productive areas.
Then I have to find a stack of cash to prime the pump for the ice rink very soon, so that by October, you know, we're not looking at a $0 amount. I suppose, I mean, do you see what I mean, does that make sense? I mean, if we leave some, I mean, it doesn't have to be all of it, I don't even mind transferring, and we can even transfer all of it, I don't mind. I'm just saying, I'm already in budget formulation mode and this puts me at a zero, you know, to get this thing off the ground. And that's not a problem, we'll find it and make it work, but just know that...
There's still actually...
If I recall correctly, we, we were going to be like 13 or 14,000 shy in that fund at the beginning of this fiscal year to get it launched. I don't know, did we ever transfer that money? And if we did, did that come out of your account? And are we just putting back what?
We made it over somebody.
Okay.
I'm just trying to recall correctly.
Funds that were transferred actually have that ring for me. The funds that were transferred from the general fund into Winter Wonderland is $19,000. I never touched it. That is still there.
So, $19,000 is, was yours anyway? I mean...
No.
Yeah, but I mean, if...
It's in Winter Wonderland, but I never touched it and I'm not reallocating that. That $19 is staying.
I think Counselor Bliss's point, and I guess if I'm misunderstanding, no, I'm sorry, if I'm understanding correctly, or unless I'm misunderstanding, is that that $19,000 came from Recreation Maintenance to begin with, correct?
It just says transfer from general fund, so I honestly can't tell you.
Okay, so I'm betting that's probably where it came from, even though my memory will bug like yours, Counselor.
I just, I don't know if we ever did do that, and I'm, it's going to be short.
So, you're not really requesting a zero?
No, there would still be...
Still have that, well, the $19...
Correct. The $19 will still be in there.
Well, so where do you need to start?
What kind of goes into, oh, to start up the rink?
Yeah.
We would have to be able to cover for the chiller, stand hall, I mean, yeah, we've got stuff that has to get covered. And if the chiller's the same as this year, it'd be 23,500, if we can make that same deal with them.
So, is there a need? What is the rec, are we trying to fix, like, do you have something that you are wanting to spend the money on, or?
It goes into the next-gen item. If we reallocate this, then the next-gen item is...
We're putting that, putting that in the maintenance supplies, and according to November's financial statement, we're almost done in that line.
Which is why you're active money from the Winter Wonderland fund, of which $19 might have come from the general fund somewhere anyway.
If I'm reading this currently, night, right, $19 may have come from the general That was an account that I did not touch specifically for, in case I would need, like, emergency money. But that's a different account from any of the account numbers that I'm having reallocated.
So, then $19 will still be in Winter Wonderland fund and it won't be zeroed out? You'll have $19 sitting there?
Yes, sir.
Reallocation from Winter Wonderland fund to recreational maintenance and supplies. So, we've got festival lights, operating supplies, maintenance supplies, marketing decided, I mean, so, okay, there's a little bit of buzz, but I'm putting it together And you're not zeroing out Winter Wonderland?
No.
That makes me happy. I didn't really have a problem with it either way, I just didn't know how, I was already turning my wheel on how to make sure we got you what you needed, even Winter Wonderland. Counselors? Much pleasure.
Okay, so your account has $18,571.
That was November.
But you probably haven't spent anything out of this account.
Which one?
The Winter Wonderland.
Well, since November, yeah, we would have. Because our utilities wouldn't have come out in November, and we're still actually waiting for one more utility to come out. Do we want to table this and move on? Do we want to table this and move on? Do you want to revisit this?
Can we talk, can we move to the next item?
I need to lie to you, I need to items down.
Well, I tell you what, we can combine the two items. I'll need to read it and then you all can make kind of a combination decision. So let me read item number 14, which is discussion of possible action on the pool expansion project. Ms. Moore, obviously there's going to be some additional information. And this is going to fill in the blank about why you're looking to move funding. Correct?
Yes.
So we'll order to put the pool, right?
I, I think.
And I do apologize, the one that's in your packet is not correct. It was brought to my attention that one of my formulas in Excel does not come out correctly. So I do apologize, this is an updated one. It has the correct number on it. We are looking at extending out the pool deck and adding another shade pavilion to add some more shaded area for our patrons to come and enjoy the pool. With this, I went ahead and looked at my proposed, that's not finalized yet, but my proposed full season with how many parties we'd be able to accommodate. And if we add this third structure, how much revenue we could possibly bring in if we book it out all summer. So that gives you why you have summer pool parties with the expansion project. Because without that third one, we wouldn't be able to potentially make what we thought.
You hadn't opened the pool yet, no?
No.
I was chatting, no, I'm sorry. Were you three minutes more? More you?
Yes, unless there's questions.
And Council Bliss, it sure sounds like you want to have one.
Oh, she answered. I asked if she's opened the pool yet or not.
I thought you said floor.
No, actually.
I thought you said floor.
I'm actually advertising for Left Bird right now so that we can open our pool one time.
I'm sorry, I thought you said floor.
I'm not like this, the pool. No, I'm not.
I thought I came from in our pool.
Well, I was chatting and whispering over here, so I was just getting back into the conversation. That was probably my fault.
Well, we'd put a dome over it, we could have it open right now.
Yeah. We actually looked into that and it's going to cost more than the pool, so.
The one that comes out of the dome.
Okay, so with this third pavilion, you're looking at 148 additional spots.
Correct.
Is that the max?
That would be the max, yes. Or that, that specific pavilion. And if we would max out the rentals in that pavilion with 65 and we multiply that, sorry, with 148, if we multiply that by what the pavilion rental is, which is 65, that gives me our beautiful number of $9,620.
So how, obviously we're not maxing out rentals currently.
We are maxing out our private parties. We're not maxing out our shade structures quite yet, but we're getting close.
And this marketer here will probably find a way. I mean, we saw a pretty sizable improvement in the pool. If I, and then correct me if I'm wrong on that, but my memory is that the revenue because of these reservations and people paying at the gate and everything went, went up.
Now, along with your pavilion rental, you still have to pay admission into the pool. So there's even more, but I can't tell you. You may have five kids, you may have 25 kids. So there's more opportunity for more revenue to come in. I just can't give you a concrete number on that one.
You don't ever want to say 100%.
But the private parties that you're talking about, is that, that's?
My after-hours?
Yeah, the pool, the after-hours for before?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I already have people wanting to reserve it.
Me personally, I would feel better having you go through the season first, just as it is. And then, you know, that way you get the first-hand experience of if that's really needed or not. And it may absolutely, absolutely be needed.
I came in in June, so I've had about half, a little over half of our season.
So you've been there as the pool's been open?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We opened what, Memorial Day?
Yes, sir.
There's more than, probably more than half, yeah.
So if you came in in, well, it's been, you came in in June.
June 12.
34th of the season.
I mean, I, I think that there's potential and I'm not against expanding what we have out at the pool. I don't know, I guess where I'm hung up is how we're doing it. And I, it's because I didn't understand and now I understand a little bit better, but I don't know that we're all on the same page here because I, you know, your thought is that there's $19,000 from the general fund. The mayor's thought is that we're zeroing out the account.
Well, I've moved to a new conclusion that that 18 and change is, is there based on the conversation. I'm not looking at the document fiction. That's what it sounds, I'm, I'm going to move away from the, wait a minute, you're zeroing it out now, I've got to find, you know, some money to develop the budget. I'll move off that one.
So how long does this take? If we are to allocate the funding toward?
If we were to even reallocate, we will go out and make sure that we have all the correct bids to get this started. We want to have it done before the opening day of the pool this year. And that's why I want to come forward.
Yeah, I can't, I can't promise to budget it and, and because, I mean, we'll be in July, you know, almost closed before we begin to start it.
We're going to be in May real fast. And so I just want to make sure that we have, if we know that this is what's coming up, we can get prepared and ready for it to go.
I tell you what, I can promise to budget, they just won't be done for the season.
I don't know if this is a lot, but could we even move half of what I'm asking over?
It's possible we'd have to do that, but because it's less than what is shown on the documents.
I mean, it makes sense. You've saved money from the, the ice rink and so now moving the ice rink over into another revenue generating venue. I mean, that's essentially what you're asking for. And so I think that if we're, if we are confirmed that, you know, we're still have money in the, in the account to get the ice rink open next year and then we can move this money over, I mean, to me, it makes perfect sense to use that money to invest into a new revenue source for us.
You'll have to forgive me, this Simon budget development mode and the first thing that hopped on and it was, wait a second, I know that that's probably going to zero, but I didn't remember honestly the other thing. So.
And so my other question is that you've given, given us a propose, like this is what you want and you think this is how much it will be. And so you've given us the proposed amount. Can, before, I think that we just go out and do this, I'd like to see, you know, really what it is you're wanting to buy with that. And so I think that tonight what we're doing is first step in moving the money over and then saying we might want to move forward with this pool project. And then at another council meeting, come back and say, this is what I want to buy. This is what a rectangle orange-shaped structure is. This is what that trash.
Have you, have you been out to the pool recently?
Yeah.
The reason I chose orange is it would match in. So it's going to be the exact same structure that we have, the blue and the yellow pavilion, exact same tables. I mean, it's all going to come right back to where it all matches in. I just stayed at orange for the simple fact that it would match in color-wise and that way we would have three distinct pavilions to have.
Kind of trash can.
Yeah, I was just saying, we've gotten off into the color, which, but.
Well, I only got the color because it's on the sheet.
Oh, gosh.
The reason the trash can is that it's set up, are because they're lifted up off the ground. So if, you know, you've got spills or whatever, you can reach out.
And not a dumpster?
No, it's actually a trash can.
Trash can.
Mm-hmm. It's an industrial trash can that has like the metal bars. You put a liner, well, a can in it and then a liner and you take it out and it has a cover so that if it's raining.
That's one can?
Yes, sir.
You'd be absolutely shocked what those things cost. And then we get a lot of complaints from.
So, so it won't go to our dumpster regulations where it'll have to be surrounded?
We'll do it probably, anybody who's based on cost alone.
It is surrounded. It's surrounded by metal. It's the exact same trash can that we have out there right now. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to make it so it all looks like it matched in from the beginning.
It's in the orange.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, then you might have to have blue, brown, blue too.
I think it says orange, because orange is on the sheet.
That's my suggestion color. We can change it. That's just my suggestion.
So you've got the reallocation and the plan in front of you. We've got two combined items and we'd entertain a motion on either or both of those things now.
I would make a motion to reallocate the money after reading each one, just to reallocate 27, 253, 56 into the Recreation Maintenance Supply.
So you have a motion for the reallocation. Is there a second? A second for the reallocation?
A second if we can amend it. They want to know. Even administration will double check.
Oh, well, my curiosity is going to make, you know, since I'll look into that.
If my memory doesn't serve correct and your memory doesn't.
Yeah, you and I are both kind of, yeah.
Well, we're checking for once.
So clerk, would you please mark the date time? You can't let Bliss knock on ourselves in something resembling agreement.
Really mind that when we go outside.
Go after it.
Yeah, we'll look into that. So we have a motion and a second from Council Bliss for approval and we'll take a roll call on that. Police clerk?
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And it's item 14. If you all want to make any kind of motion on that at this time, now is your chance. Last opportunity to make a motion on the pool expansion.
I, I would like to see this. I just want a little bit more, like.
Inseparable ground?
Yeah, maybe, I mean, tell me where you're going to put it.
You're in consultant, I'm checking special.
I've been calling numbers for a while.
That's fine, sir. I can get that to you.
Because I think we moved the money and so now we've set it up to be able to happen. But yeah, I would just like to see more. I mean, I, it just kind of hit the packet and it gave me an idea that I was thinking about.
I'd be more than happy, more than happy to give you that information.
So unless there's no objection, we'll take no action on that item. And the motion, of course, I guess would actually be in the form of a motion. We haven't heard one, so we'll take no action on 14. We do need to move back to item 13, which is discussion and possible action on the 2018 pool details.
I think you guys have it in your packet, but in case not. I just want to look forward to the summer, nice warm sunny weather that will not melt our ice rink at that point. And propose an opening and closing date as well as propose a few other small changes. Questions?
What are those small changes?
Saturday hours we're going to change. So Saturday last season, we opened from 11 to 7 and that's kind of confusing to people. Are you open at 11 every day? No, well, why are you open on Saturdays but you're not open? So I just try to make it a little bit more uniform for when we would open. Another change that I'm making, coming from aquatic backgrounds and knowing our standards for life guards with our private parties, I'm perfectly fine with the $150 for a private party, but if we have more than 50 swimmers and if we're looking at even younger children, we need to have more guards on for safety reasons. So I'm just simply asking for an extra $25 for every 25 over that 50. So there's kind of a breakdown here. 1 through 50 would be 150, 51 through 75 would be 175, 76 to 100, 200 and so on. I also am projecting that by the beginning of July, we'll be able to schedule private parties on Tuesdays. We can start those private parties as early as 1:00 in the afternoon and we can take them as late as 9:00. But I would prefer if we're going to have eight hours of parties, but I choose two sets of guards. It tends to be a little hectic when you're guarding for that long. Our punch passes, we're going to change our punch passes around just a little bit. Previously, our punch passes were 65, 65 punches for $85. And when you did the math on that, it was like a dollar 20 a punch. Regular missions is five. I'm trying to help the city out a lot. So we went ahead and we decided that we would try to go for 50 punches for $85. That makes it a dollar 70 per punch. Regular mission is still $5. So I still think it's a really good break for our community members. Swimming lessons previously were $40 for the first swimmer and 25 for any additional. I prefer coming from an aquatic background to have more guards on staff so that we do not run into any incidences. So I just bumped that first one up to 45 versus the 40. Just allows me to have a little bit more revenue come in to cover the guards' cost. I proposed three sessions for swim lessons this year. Last year we had two, they filled up really fast and I did tons of private lessons afterwards, which is awesome. I'm looking at possibly proposing a parent top class, so that'd be like a mommy and me or a parent and little one, so that we can get some of these younger kids into the pool and more acclimated and be comfortable with it. My goal, prevent drowning in the long run. The more exposure to safe water, the easier that becomes. Our public parties, we've never put a deposit on them and I kind of am afraid of that. We haven't had too many issues. Last year, we did pretty well, but there were some that did not clean up after themselves and I would just think it might make them a little bit more responsible.
Like in the pool?
Yes, in the pool. Yes, in the pool. I love people.
Have you ever, has there been any thought about extending the season?
We actually did that last year for the 2016, 2017 session. And it kind of got dicey with our guards being there.
High school kids?
Yes, sir. And college students that go to college out of town. So it, it kind of got to where we had it closed because we didn't have enough guards on or we didn't have enough people or, I mean.
I mean, even the potential of just extending the weekend season, you know, once school starts.
What I have, this is only from my personal experience at this pool, again, as the previous pool I've had. Once school starts, sports start up and a lot of our guards are athletes. And so even before school starts, some of them are having to switch out because of practices. And if we lose our college kids.
So we'll put a pin in that.
Yep. I'm not opposed to it. I just, before I go ahead and make that public, I want to make sure we have enough guards to cover.
You're the expert and you've done a good job so far. I make motions, approve these.
These changes, we've got a council, we've got a motion.
Please, changes, we've got a coun, uh, council, we've got a motion from Council Combs, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Council Bliss. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Lord, thank you very much for the specificity, and we'll get some other information back to the council soon, and I'll check on that other thing from the fuzzy memory I referred to sometime in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 15, is discussion and possible action to approve the proposed travel and train of assistance in Tulsa, Mr. Carr and Ms. Curtis. I think that, were we talking about, the reason it came back is because it's stable, and we were going to want a little bit more time to actually make, you know, some changes to satisfy some of the questions and comments from the last meeting, is that correct?
Right.
To councilors, we can take no motion, no action here tonight, and give them a little bit more time to get some of the changes made if you all want to talk about them. Unless there's a situation, that's what we will do. And we will then move on to item number 16, seeing no objection, which is discussion and possible action on developing internal controls of the city, uh, excuse me, internal controls of the city administrator expenditures, Council Bliss.
Thank you, Mayor, I've reached out to you before on this, and I just think it would be nice not to see the grid card transactions of all departments, but for just that, the city administrator, and I'm not looking to get you for anything, I just think if you're proper internal control to have in place, and that we're responsible for the numbers and employment.
You do know I don't have a card.
You don't have a card?
Exactly.
You don't have purchase cards, or?
The way it works, the administration has two cards, so I carry a card, and finance carries a card. If a mayor, council member wants to use my card, they use it.
No, that card.
That card. I don't have a personal card.
Well, then, if, then it's not for you, then, it would be for administration, and we can see the expenditure from the administrative cards, as it were. And that's, that's the internal control I want there.
Didn't we just?
We did, we don't have.
Approve the R vest?
We don't have those cards yet, and when we do, it will have an individual's name.
So it kind of begs the question of what do we want to see when that change is made? I mean, when, when people do, those handful of people, I appreciate the list, get those cards.
So, right now, it would be reconciled by the finance department.
Correct.
And so what you're.
Which still is.
Talking about is to expenditures. Essentially, what you're saying is because, I guess the administration is over the finance department, it doesn't make sense to have the finance department.
Overstanding the administration. So I just felt it'd be more appropriate to have a better law to do that, and not with that. I want managing like a financial statement that we get sent to us, or you want to do that.
I'm pretty sure the, you were.
Just figuring this thing or something, I think that was your idea.
It was actually mine, I was, it was one of those things where you're, you're thought of, somebody needs to look at this for whatever reason, I was like, I kind of brought a few watchers, watchers, I said, if you all want us to come through those, we can get you copies of those each month. I don't know if I mentioned specifically the financial statement, but I did say we can provide copies of those.
Well, I meant, I meant like the financial.
Yeah, right.
You know, that we get.
Just when it shows up in the mail, we can make some copies or scan them in and email them, and you all can come through and do your.
Well, these new, these new cards, but they'll be actually broken down by who gets them.
Each department head will have their own card, I'll have my own card, so you can track my expenses, the mayor will have a card, each council member will have a card, they'll be kept locked up.
But you have to check them out.
You'll have to check them out.
And that'll be in travel.
So we can make sure people are not abusing them. Yeah, I just kind of, I guess I either didn't realize, or just, I guess one was coming with my name on it, which is fine, because I, I travel two or three times a year, maybe, so, for a conference or two or something. So it makes certain kind of sense, I guess. But, but just for the record, I'll be going to finance to get mine too, I ain't carrying that dude around, it makes it clear.
I mean, I think it's a good, I mean, I think we should sit down and put together a policy, and I think now would probably be the time to do that, with the change in the way we're doing things, we have the R vest, P cards coming, so now would be a time to sit down and, and put that policy in place.
So do we want to bring those to, I mean.
No, I need more.
I hope it doesn't get more than two pages long, but.
It's got to be more than two, less than fifteen.
More than two, and less than fifteen, change the font, very narrow margins.
The city administrator oversees the department, right? You know, if we do oversee the administration, just in that regard, for the internal control process, you know, that's, we're going to fall astray.
I mean, we can look at other cities, I mean, we're not the only city on the hill here, I mean, there's got to be other cities that are doing the same thing with it, so let's do a little research and put together a policy.
We'll bring one back to you at some point? Do you all want to take any action on that at all? Hearing no desire for action, we'll move to item 17, which is discussion and possible action to make a plan, to bring the city's financials up to date by April 1, 2018, Council Bliss?
There's some wording there, but, yeah, it's basically a few, my thought process, hear if there is a plan, and know what the plan is, and, and we're kind of regulated by state statute on the budget, budgets kind of have to be based off these financial statements, and I don't want to get caught behind here.
Uh, I don't, I don't think that we are, I think December's about the only one that we're behind at the moment.
Very close to be completed, and I'll move right on with the J more at that point, hope that we're finished by the, let's see, by the end of this month.
So we'll beat, we'll beat your April 1 deadline by quite a bit, they, they've been operating at a certain.
Deadline.
The, say that again.
State's deadline.
What is the state's deadline? April 1? Well, we'll beat theirs or whoever, and if there's more technical problems than we don't, then I guess we'll deal with that then, but we have no reason to believe that there's anything that will hold us up. The only holdup here is a very large stack of challenges, we've had the finance staff change out, basically, the forklift upgrade, every position in there is new at some point here in the last eight months or so, I forget the timeframe, but it's, it's something in that window. We weren't particularly enjoying the, the performance of that rough group or office before, they kind of left us in a lurch when they left back in summer and fall of last year, we're overcoming some of that, and then, of course, just to make it very difficult on the, the new members, we ended up having some technical issues with the software network that prevented you all from doing some work for a gash couple of weeks ago, because we couldn't quite get the problem located. We're through all that now, and we will beat April 1, 2018 by, I don't know, probably a good 30 to 45 days, depending upon how much luck we have, get in December, and then down to January, put together.
Well, that's great, because the, the folks I've asked about this have told me that it wouldn't happen, that's why it got on the agenda, so I'm glad to know that, that I heard wrong.
Who, who told you it wouldn't happen?
I'm not going to sit here and point fingers.
Well, you're willing to say, okay, we want to, okay, well, we'll beat it, and.
Sir?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
March 1st is actually when budget documents have typically gone out, so we're technically not behind the eight dollars at this point, we're anticipating trouble, that's not technically there, because of the late financials, but we're anticipating that.
And, and at the pace of which we have been historically moving, it was tough to see the light at the end of the tunnel, the pace that has been, that we've been moving at the last week or two, been, one, I can see that it was going to get us there, so.
Financial statement template had been deleted, if I understand correctly, so we had to reconstruct that last fall, so we've had, we've had some challenges, but we're, we're almost across that bridge, and, and if it's March 1st, and if it's the budget you're worrying about, well, that's up to me, and as long as I hit the deadline in June, or is it Matthew June?
June.
Then that'll be on my back if we don't hit that, otherwise, we should be pretty good. Any other questions or comments of Ms. Curtis, any? Seeing none, we will now discuss the mid-month meeting, and I had hinted earlier, as item number 18, that we have a holiday, I believe, two weeks from tonight, is that right? And so we want to do it on the 20th then, if we wanted to hold a mid-month, which I presume we will want to.
Sure.
And we may even have a couple of items that, you know, we strongly want to have a meeting for. 7/19 at 7?
Oh, the 20th.
I apologize, the 20th at 7. Not an objection of good meeting, and, okay, 20. Yeah, we typically just go and move along, and we'll go to 19, take a motion to adjourn.
So we'll.
Okay, we'll give the motion to Council Bliss, the second to Council Hires, and take a roll call.
Council Bliss? Council Bliss?
Yes.
Combs, not Council Combs?
No.
No, Council Hires?
Yes.
Motion.